Yes, he is.
Can I make most of the agenda?
Is that a second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. We have the minutes from June fifth, two thousand and twenty five. Everybody had a chance to look at it. Is there a motion to approve it?
Yes.
For a second?
One second. I wasn't here on my schedule. Recuse my second.
And then you can actually second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? That was over for you. First thing on our agenda after that is our engineers. Do you bring up those?
Yeah, so I really don't have a whole lot today, no permits or motions. I will be bringing up a couple next week. But for a maintenance update this, this week, we've been focusing utilizing our shoulder machine. We've been working on two hundred and thirty fifth street and then we've also worked on Franklin Avenue. So we're going pretty much Franklin Avenue is starting at two hundred and thirty fifth street all the way to Salem and coming back. And then we do plan to next week, later in the week, work on Oakland Mills Road to get that shoulder. Some of that is in anticipation of our bridge project this winter that we're doing. So trying to get, while we have a shoulder machine, we're going to use it. We'll probably do some others as we can. We only have it for a few weeks, then it goes back and we will get another opportunity when it freezes up again and we can grab it if we want to, but we're trying to dedicate what we can right now. Blade operators, they've been blading roads, but since we're doing the shoulder, we pulled a lot of those guys off, not all of them, but a fair amount of them, we work on that shoulder crew. And then spraying noxious weeds again and working on stone shoulders. Right now, the, what Airbnb guy's working on is kind of back and forth. He's working on stone shoulders and then if he's got some reports of noxious weeds while he's in there, he's also switching to that and kind of depending on the wind and, and stuff.
What do you mean, when you say stone shoulders?
Uh, so any of our granular shoulders that we have on paved roads, they'll, they'll spray a, a three foot width on there. And so we have a few that are wider, but primarily most of our shoulders are not three foot. So they go down and they're trying to kill that vegetation from taking root in our granular shoulders. Makes it harder for us to blade that later on. Now, some of our paved roads have what we call earth shoulders. So there was a period where they tried to utilize earth shoulders where basically it's a sod. Those we are not spraying because there's going to rock underneath there. But they're, they're harder to do maintenance on when you end up getting a fall. I think the airport road is kind of a big example where you can see some earth shoulders. Iowa Avenue is another one we had some issues with. But it was, is an economy thing that they tried. So I'd say not all of them. He does try to cover that. We do that every year, usually in this May-June period that we're, we're trying to get those sprayed. Thanks. Mowing again, we're still working. We have the two tractors working. That's, it's progressing. It's always slow, most people would like. Kind of switched a little bit in the past, kind of focused on the west side and we're east. This year, we're working from the east side going west. So if you're on the west side, this time around, it looks like we're not out there, but we are. It just takes time to cover the territories that we're working on. Miss Lane's construction, as we're at most of my information. Norris Asswell, we had her erosion control contractor in this week to pull out some silk fence. The grading contractor came back in and reworked some of those erosion spots that we had. And then they are out there seeding those today. We're putting down some maddie to get that to grow. And then that will probably wrap up the majority of our work that the contractor's going to do. We will have some stuff that will follow with that, clean up seeding and stuff in the fall. But this will be pretty much hopefully the end of that project. Denko is a contractor that we utilize for some maintenance work. They'll be starting, I put on here tomorrow, but most likely Monday. Well, after I put this out, they called in and said it'll be Monday. So on Monday, they'll be working on Racine Avenue. They're going to do a scrub seal. So basically, they, they scrub in oil on the whole pavement surface to fill all the micro cracks that we have to kind of seal that off. And then they'll put sand down and the sand is to help eat up any of the excess oil that they have and then they'll broom it off. And then they're, they'll do one lane at a time, so there'll be flaggers and pilot cars and then they won't switch traffic on until they feel there's a point where it's going to cause some issues when you want to drive on it. But there will be, the public means that we'll send out a notice later today about Monday for that. We got off target. So we're using flaggers and pilot cars. We'll put signs up for no pavement markings. So once they do this, there won't be pavement markings on that section. So we'll have signs up and then we'll be mobilizing our paint crew once that is, is fit to put paint on and then we'll work on getting that striked again and then continue like our striping operation that we have. That's it there. So just some Miss Lane's items, so you guys know, we're starting to kind of think about the end of the fiscal year. So in the office, we're working on getting ready for that. So a lot of times, we'll review the inventory that we've got for materials, make sure that our local construction, anything that we don't want to carry over to the next fiscal year. We try to wrap up those projects to make sure we're good to go with them. Couple updates on some construction projects that will be coming down the pipe. Bridge twenty four, this is on Lexington Avenue. It's up the northeast end of the county. I'm working on check plans right now. We've got right away plaits and we're progress and we're, we're moving to a November letting. So I mean, when it actually gets to the DOT and goes out to bid, we will find out our price in November. There is a chance it could be delayed another month if we run into some hiccups there, but I don't anticipate that. That's just kind of again, getting that work scheduled for next year's construction work.
Is that north?
Yes, yeah, correct.
Yep.
Okay. Up there, that blue one. And then the other one is one hundred and seventieth street. This will just be east of two eighteen, about mile and a half. There's a corner there. There again, we're working on check plans and right away plaits. The right away plaits are pretty much done. I got a couple more reviews done. And there, we're looking at November, December letting. That's using all the market funds. And again, we're anticipating that being next summer construction or next year's construction as well, barring any other delays. But those are kind of things, just giving you ideas. We're, the prep work to get these built now is going on, working on next year's construction programs and different projects that we have. That's it. Oh, last, I made a note here at the end. Central Cable, since we've been on Franklin Avenue, Central Cable is the utility contractor that's doing work for KCTC. They had a large crew out there. They did a nice job with their flaggers and traffic control, I called yesterday. They're working on Oakland Mills too. Andrew was telling me that they're, they're trying to get the stuff wrapped up this week so they can move to their next job. Eric, that's the final.
Yeah, they did a really good job. They did really good to work with. Yeah. Traffic, they were getting around it. It seemed like they did it quick.
They would be the model.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, no kidding.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have any need to move home over there?
I hope so.
Okay. Good morning.
Morning.
So we received our work comp quote for this year and things look really good. I'm going to focus on the back page, which is the premiums. Walk through this briefly. But just so you know, in this packet has a complete list of all of our exposures. And when I say exposures, the class codes of what we do. So for example, screening the road, police officers, electric officials, we have attorneys and so on. Okay? And based off of each class code, there is a rating based off of the assigned risk that NCCI has appointed you. NCCI governs all work comp right now. Okay? And so you can see based off of that, the higher the rate, the more risk is associated with that. Okay? Someone who are clerical has very low risk of having work comp claim versus someone that maybe does building maintenance. So based off of that, if you look on the very last page and where he said, where it says premium subtotal, we have, you can see the difference between the numbers of last year. It's about eight thousand dollars less than last year. What that means is we have a little bit, we have lower premiums based off of what the rates were for the state of Iowa. So the state of Iowa each year says, hey, based off of the number of claims that we've had for each of these categories, we're going to assign a rate. Those rates went down again, which is a good thing. That means the whole state of Iowa for each of these class codes is being safer. So we have safer workforce. Okay? However, if you go down just a couple rows and you see a number like point six five and point seven three, that's our experience mod. And that's very specific to our county. One is average. Anything above one is not so good. I mean, we're going to get added premium onto our policies. Anything below one is a good thing. Right? So for example, last year, we had a point six five and we were getting a thirty-five percent discount compared to our peers. This year is point seven three, so it went up a little bit. We had a little bit more claims activity and what they do to factor that is they look at three years of history. They exclude the most recent one and go back three years. Okay? In that three year period, we had a little bit more activity. However, we're still at a point seven three. Fantastic compared to our peers. Again, one is average. So that's a good thing. So we're getting a twenty-seven percent discount off of what our peers would have. Right? So then on top of that, IMWCA issues discounts. So if we were just to go with the standard and we had one mod, we didn't get any discounts, again, our premium would be a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. However, with all those discounts factored in, our premium is forty-four thousand dollars for this year, eight thousand dollars less than it was last year. So all things considered, we had a little bit more claims activity. Okay? So we had five, you know, basically eight percent more that we typically add on for the year. Plus our payrolls went up just a little bit. After all that in, we actually got a decrease. It's a fantastic thing. Very good renewal. I was very happy with it. IMWCA has done a very good job for us. So I ran through that pretty quickly. Questions at all?
You said, Adam, that our activity was up eight percent. Is there a dollar figure here that ties into that?
So yes, if you actually look at where it says experience modification, that equated to roughly about six.
Six thousand?
Yeah, fifty-five hundred-ish.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's still, all things considered, yes, we had a little bit more activity and we're going to have some injuries. We have some risky things, right? We have people that are on the road. We have people that are in the jail. We have people that are, you know, are police officers. A lot of things are sometimes just out of their control. There's nothing that we could have done to prevent an inmate from striking us. Right? So things do happen. But still having a point seven three experience mod is awesome. You guys are doing great things here. Other questions?
Did you say what the statewide average on the experience mod, mod would be?
One is the average.
One the average?
Yep.
And when is the premium due? This way?
Yes, July first. Yep, this goes effect July.
Okay. Very good.
Pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Okay. So we need to be working on that live after.
Yeah, and Derek's monitoring that very closely. He's very in tune with what's on, all the claims and the conversations. In fact, we had a call a couple weeks ago, well, maybe a month ago, probably now, talking about some of the claims.
Does this go back to that conversation we had?
Getting the safety team back together to make sure that everybody's. Aware. That's what we need to do to continue to improve. Okay. So that's probably something for your reference. Yeah. And if there's anything that you guys need, you know, we have tons of resources. See, it has a ton of resources. I have a ton of resources, so just let us know if you can support that.
No, sure. These are some we have in the past. We didn't really remember things. Keep them your own. All right.
Thanks. That was good news. Thank you.
Yeah.
For once, right?
It's always been a good idea.
Well, I don't know if I delivered the good news, but I'm glad to be here.
Sheriff and Jamie, you're next on our agenda.
Thank you. As you know, I was here about a month ago asking for outside counsel again. I explained why. Came last week, your absence, so they asked me to come back this week. Since last week, I've been served subpoenas. Four of my people, ten percent of my workforce is going to be going to Des Moines the nineteenth and twentieth for these depositions and then back in July for hearings. So I'm just here for names.
Rich, when you said four subpoenas in your workforce, are they all tied together in the same lawsuit or is it whatever?
This is all having to do with an ILA decertification process.
Okay. The same single one?
Same thing, yeah. Chad, you have some questions?
There was. There were some questions, official capacity and private capacity representation. Has that been worked through? Has that been determined? Has that, understand that, where does the private and official capacity start and end?
I don't believe any of the four people subpoenaed would be going to these depositions if they didn't work at the sheriff's office. They're all, in my opinion, they're all official duty.
So they're, they're subpoenaed to go up there, testify to add their knowledge concerning Perez and the decertification process, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
I, I've said, I've had a deposition or two, but I guess what would be the goal? I mean, what will, having an attorney there, because it's basically between the state of Iowa and former deputy Perez, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I, I assume that Perez will have his attorney there.
Yes.
And.
They're the ones that, they're the ones that filed the subpoenas.
Okay. So if they ask you a question, you'll be under oath, you'll have to give your answer anyway, right?
Presumably, yes.
And same way with your other folks there. Would having your private counsel there be of benefit? I mean, the county attorney has said he will be there to represent you as sheriff official capacity.
Absolutely not. He told me the, quite the contrary. He's not representing me. He's representing the county.
And he'll be representing you in your official capacity as sheriff?
That is not what he told me in our meeting. That's why I'm here.
That was my question as well, Steve. From a philosophical standpoint, are we representing the county as well as the official office and the individual that holds that office?
Are we talking about just this situation or are you talking in general?
I think either or, general.
For this situation, one, county's not a party to this.
Okay.
So the sheriff's there, I guess, and it's, I mean, it started because he's there as official capacity, because he's the, the law enforcement officer from this area that employed you. But they're all witnesses. We're not parties to it.
Okay.
So the only people at these depositions that can object to any questions are the attorneys for the parties. Witnesses don't get to object to questions. Their attorney wouldn't get to object to questions. What happens in a deposition when there's an objection, most times, ninety-seven percent of the time, is, say, it's just two parties. If I'm there in a deposition, I'm representing, say, we were a party to this and the sheriff's there and I'm representing him, then I could make objections on behalf. I'd object. Sheriff would still have to answer the question. The objection's noted in the deposition and that's important then when it comes to trial later. Then those objections are reviewed and possibly can't get any, get into that evidence. So in this situation, I mean, it's just a witness. In thirty-two years I've been practicing law, I've never, and I've done hundreds of depositions, I've never had a witness bring their own attorney. Because Chad said, pretty straightforward. You go in, you answer the questions truthfully and that's that.
Well, and that's part of the question is I, you going up there as sheriff, who, and whoever going up there as a deputy or a jailer or jail administrator or whoever, in my mind, it looks like you're going up there as official capacity. I mean, they're not asking Tommy Tenpact to go up there. I mean, they're, they're asking you as the sheriff to go up there and give the, give the facts as the best you know what was going on. So I don't see how that can not be, the, the county attorney, I think, is obligated to represent you in that capacity. Is that your understanding?
That, that was my understanding as well, but I.
And the reason I'm here, guys.
It's because I had a meeting with Darren on April eighteenth and he said he is not my legal counsel. His job is to prosecute cases in Henry County. His job is to protect the county from liability and his job is to investigate any officer that perjures himself on the stand. To me, that's not representing me in my legal capacity.
And it's, I, it's my understanding and I think the rest of you, that Darren himself will go because I, you know, he has said that he will go represent you. I, I've heard him say that myself to me, that he will represent you as sheriff, official capacity for whoever goes up there, is, is my understanding of. And I, I guess, I think it all boils down to the conflict of interest we've been talking about for almost two years.
I, I think the other assistant county attorney and Mr. Perez are personal friends. They sponsored a highway cleanup project together. I, I don't feel like the county attorney's office can adequately go in there. I think they have a bona fide conflict of interest to go. Whether it's in my official capacity or me personally, I don't think they're going to do anything for me or my people. That's why I'm here. I've been asking you, practically begging you three gentlemen, excuse me, Steve, two point five gentlemen, for the last two years to have legal counsel for this conflict of interest and you keep saying no, it's going to end in tragedy and I'm asking you to help me as a county official, protect the county.
How will outside legal counsel do anything more than, because they won't be able to object and say, don't answer that. If it's a subpoena, you got to answer that, right?
But, but speaking with the attorney that I have employed for almost two years, they disagree with that. They say if, they told me that if it's outside the realm of the topic at hand, that they can't object to that and they can ask me not to answer questions. And I have the right not to answer questions. I did a partial deposition back in April and they were asking me questions about my childhood, my high school education, you know, how, how I moved to Mount Pleasant thirty-four years ago. And they said those questions were out of the ordinary. That, and I've done depositions as well, so have you. Usually they ask you your name, your age, where you live, you know, how long you've been in the profession. You know, get the basic information about you. They were asking me questions about Happy Joe's Pizza where I worked in nineteen ninety-one, you know? And it wasn't, it wasn't what was your employment there. They were asking me questions about, I'm surprised they didn't ask how many pepperonis go on a pizza. You know, they didn't. I, I'm exaggerating a little bit, but quite frankly, at one point, I looked at the attorney general and said, are you going to let them continue to ask me these questions? They have nothing to do with what we're doing here. And she said, I'm not your legal counsel. Well, who is? That's, that's why I'm here. You know, that, that's one-on-one of why I'm here. I, I asked for advice from the attorney general who asked me to be there and, and was bluntly told, I'm not your legal counsel. If Darren goes or not, I still think there's a conflict of interest between the county attorney's office and my office in this topic because Mr. Perez and Mr. Vera are personal friends. They, they, I, I don't feel like they can independently and unbiasedly represent me and the three people that work or did work for me.
So another question, obviously, I, I wrote some questions down because I've been thinking a ton of this.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. I want to support law enforcement any way I can, but I got to do so in a justifiable manner in my mind. I got to be able to justify it myself. You, you, the next question was, what line of questions was of concern? If they're talking about pepperoni pizzas and how you got to Mount Pleasant, that seems like a stretch. I mean, that does seem like a stretch. And if it were involving other litigation issues, I don't know the legal legal way of, do you talk about that? Can you talk about that? I, I don't know. I, I don't know that. You had asked for a, a quashing of the prior testimony, right?
It was recommended to me by the attorney general who was there to discuss it with the county attorney or my private attorney to file a motion to quash of that original deposition. I asked Darren, he said, there is nothing to quash. I asked my attorney and they said, we certainly can, but come to the board and ask if we can represent you in this matter prior to us doing that.
You know, another thing I hear, you know, having, having outside counsel, having your private attorney there, I mean, that obviously won't change your, your deposition. That won't change, change your answers any.
Nope.
Or you would be in that, that perjury boat and that, you know, that's just unheard of there. Does Perez, and I'm going to ask a real general thing, does Perez have any connection, knowledge or involvement whatsoever with the Wagler complaints, investigations or litigations?
He would have knowledge of them because he worked there during some of those complaints. If he was directly involved, no, I don't believe he was.
You know, because if somebody's fishing to get information through a different channel, I don't think that's a very.
It certainly could be, Chad, I don't know.
And then I, with, with the assistant attorney, Vera and Perez with the reported friendship, if that is accurate, I don't know that. I haven't seen this sign.
It's been taken down now.
If he, I mean, I would think he could just be removed from any involvement in that case whatsoever. And that would fix that issue.
Well, last week at the department head meeting, he reported that four of my people were subpoenaed, myself and three others. I didn't even have that knowledge and we didn't get our subpoenas till Friday. The day after, he reported to you three gentlemen that, that we were being subpoenaed. One of them was a dispatcher that was subpoenaed. We didn't have any idea that she was involved in this thing with Perez until the next day when she was served, a day after Mr. Vera told you gentlemen that four people were going to be served. I didn't, I didn't have that knowledge.
Mr. Vera gave, or was given that information by Darren Stater. So it's not something that Mr. Vera knew on his own.
Regardless, Mr. Stater knew it the day before. We didn't know it. I, I think there's a bona fide conflict of interest here and that's why I'm here. For the fourth time.
They also have questions, are they available?
Not right now. You know, people hinted and made innuendos that, you know, I have a kid working for you. You know, my son works for a jail. They says, well, you're, you got to vote his way. No, I don't have to vote his way. I mean, that would be wrong if, if I would do that. Well, there could be retaliation. I'm not going down that road.
Nor will I, Chad.
Yeah, I, I'm not going down that road.
Zach does a good job for me, quite frankly, so I don't think that's necessary. I mean, our legislators approached this topic in their session this year. You know, it, it's a serious topic and there's a bona fide conflict of interest here. And I understand Mr. Stater disagrees with that and I respect his opinion. I just disagree with it. There is a conflict of interest here and, and it, it has to be addressed. You know, what other elected official or department head would pay the legal fees on behalf of Henry County for a year? And I've done that. I'm protecting Henry County with my own funds. Okay? So take my annual salary and I said it last month, it's seventy. Okay, so take my annual salary and I said it last month, it's seventy thousand dollars in legal fees I paid for the county. Not for myself. This is all county business. Seventy thousand dollars. Take that off my salary. I'm probably the lowest paid county official. It has to change and I'm asking you guys to help me make a change. I'm protecting the county at my own expense.
You know, I, I gotta say because it needs said, the public has hired legal representation to do that.
There is a conflict of interest with that legal counsel.
You know.
That's where we were in December twenty-three and that's where we are today.
I, I know. If we were to approve something like that, that is, I mean, if we were to say, go, go hire an attorney to represent you as, as you, you would. Where does that end?
When the conflict of interest ends, Chad. I don't know the answer to that. If, if I did, I'd, I'd be a really intelligent man. I, I don't know when that ends. But there is one. There is one and, and loudly and clearly I'm telling you, I'm asking you, I'm practically begging you to do the right thing here. It, there is a conflict of interest. Our legal representative is going to testify in federal court soon as a witness on behalf of the plaintiffs. What more do you need for proof of a conflict of interest?
Is that true?
Yes, it's true.
No subpoenas have been issued in that case or any witnesses.
Not at all.
I don't believe there's many, any exhibit witness exchange in that federal case.
You were in a closed session where he told you that.
Could it happen? Yes, it could. Only potentially anybody that had any involvement or knowledge whatsoever of the situation could be subpoenaed and testified.
If we were to approve that, Rich, would you be able to put together some type of request, written request, that we can attach to that action moving forward? Spelling out who the attorney would be. I, you've mentioned the name. I don't, I don't know them right off the get-go. How many hours would be involved in it?
Chad, I, I have, I have invoices from last July first through current. I paid the bill last night showing what they have done for Henry County and what I have paid for. It's precise. Every invoice says, talk with the sheriff about an IPB topic. Talk to the sheriff about an ILA Arturo Perez topic. We discussed this. We prepared this document. All those invoices are, are very precise and I, I could easily pull them up and give them to you. Now, a hypothetical on what this ILA thing's gonna entail, I, I don't know the answer to that because it hasn't happened. I know the depositions are two days, the nineteenth and twentieth, two of us on the nineteenth and two of us on the twentieth. And there's a hea- hearing scheduled in late July on the same topic. I, I don't know how long that'll take. It's a hearing. It depends on the attorneys and the processes of that hearing. I, I know Ellis Law Firm is who I've worked with since last July first and they are well aware of everything that's been going on. And, and, and to, to bring in another law firm and, and ask them to get up to speed would take a ridiculous amount of time and money.
You know, I, I guess being, being responsible for expending public money, I need to know where that will end or a, a, an idea of where that would end because you're starting a brand new term, he's starting a brand new term. I mean, gonna be in office for a long time yet.
He's at the tail end of a term. He's got a year and a half to go.
Yeah. When, when will that? I guess, when will outside legal representation ever end?
I, I don't know the answer to that, Chad. I can't, I'm not gonna fabricate something.
I'm not.
Rhetorical question, just.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not asking.
Perspective, I, I, I don't think that's a, a question that can be answered today, obviously.
No, obviously it can't, but I, it's just like.
Yeah, more rhetorical.
Well, I, I, I guess a, a non-rhetorical response is, we've had outside counsel for other matters. You know, we, we've had, in, in my time as sheriff, we've had it for a number of, of issues. The difference is normally they're ICAP covered matters. This is not an ICAP cover matter. We just resolved one a few weeks ago. There was a ICAP remedy type of situation. This is not covered by ICAP.
I got done a lot of time from here.
Doing well, Chad. You don't have any questions?
Well, those were, I think, some questions we had in mind. I think, um, just a couple of things I had to think about, kind of tailing on to what Chad's talking about here. You know, from a budgetary perspective at this point, if we move forward, I think in the short term, as we look at this very specific situation with the ILA, we need to understand where you're at in the budget because I'm gonna, I would, I would say yes to your request, but in the same caveat, I would say, do you have a budget to cover that within your existing budget to that?
The budget that we're currently working under? Maybe. The budget for next year, I budgeted funds for legal counsel and it was approved.
It was. And I would say today, find the money within your budget, figure it out.
Okay.
That's my response. How were you two guys around?
That was the response in December twenty-three with these guys and Mr. Mueller.
Okay.
Was as long as I was within my budget, it was approved and it was approved.
Well, that was obviously in question after the fact, right? So, what's the discussion today? And house file that you mentioned gives us the ability to do that.
And that has a, that has a begin date upon enactment and I think that enactment was fifteen May?
May fifteen, I brought it. So, anything prior would not be, go.
That's my understanding, but I, I'm not a legal scholar by any means.
Legal beagle?
I'm a legal beagle. Alright.
So, um, your comment, Chad's comment, um, just so I have a complete understanding. What I have understood is that you're gonna be subpoenaed or your people, the people who work in the sheriff's office, for, uh, things that happened at county. Our county attorney has said, he would, in deposition, say if there's something wrong in the questions asked, they would try to ask if that would be brought over the script. Were it nullified, at least noted that it would not, should not be asked. Our county attorneys are to protect the county and the offices of the county. So, I don't know what else there needs to be. If there's something else, I don't see it. So, if you two gentlemen would like to make a, a vote, a decision, I'll call that we asked for the sheriff to receive funding for outside counsel.
Would, if there is a motion, clarify what the motion, whether this is to write outside counsel for the sheriff, provide outside counsel for the chief deputy bell, provide outside counsel for Renee Zama, and provide outside counsel for Chad Bell.
Is there a motion?
Kim, that.
Let's make a motion that we can discuss.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, we should.
Second back motion.
What, the motion being what, Chad?
The motion being hire outside counsel to represent the four men or the four staff people involved here. Now, discussion.
Yes, a second. A second for the discussion.
Surely all four of the people are gonna be utilizing the same attorney. I mean, we, we need to, I mean, this is public money. We need to minimize the expenses the best we can. I mean, are all four of them? I guess we could make it that, that all four would utilize the same service. I mean, because hypothetically, one attorney for this one, another attorney for this one, another one for that one. I mean, you could times four pretty quick, uh, times four the hours. I mean, I guess I'm trying to get away from just having a blank check written to a, a group of attorneys that I, I'm.
I'll just shut up about.
I have a couple responses to your comment. One, I don't know what Ellis Law Firm was, answer would be if I asked them for all four representation. I can certainly ask them before the day's over. Secondly, there's been a blank check since last July and I've paid it. You know, it's a little offensive to say that, Chad, no offense to you. It's offensive to me that there's been a blank check that Rich McNamie's been paying since last July on behalf of the county. So, uh, with those two things said, I can certainly talk to Ellis Law Firm before the day's over and see if they'll represent all four. I know they'll represent me. I've already talked to them about that.
To that point, Rich, we as supervisors, you have been about any of this until last November? Or, Chad? No, was it, was it December?
We're talking this ILA thing here or something.
Anything?
No.
December of twenty-three is when you originally knew about it.
Rich and I had a conversation and that's when I said, hey, is that in your budget type thing? And I was in error by saying that because it takes a board motion, so.
But now that our house file, it's within our realm to work with him. Anybody that needs representation and we feel there's conflict of interest, so.
But is that, is that deadlined? Is that May fifteen date? I don't know if we, I, I, my.
That's not my understanding.
My understanding that it is, so we probably need some clarification, right, Rich?
Which is good. Yeah, we all need to talk about it, figure it out. Talk to the legal folks, talk to whomever we need to, but at this point, we're very specific on what we're talking about with this ILA situation, right?
I would venture to guess it'd be two days for the depositions and probably a couple of days for the hearing. And then if there's an appeal, there'd be a few days with that.
And just to clarify, Mr. Dietrich, it doesn't even require a conflict now under that new house file.
Right.
So, it just gives you that power.
Gives us that power, but that was kind of thrust in the emphasis.
That was the original emphasis to.
Is that house filing?
It was taken out.
Eight sixty-two.
Eight sixty-two.
I knew you'd know.
I knew that you knew that I knew it. We sound, starting to sound like an episode of Seinfeld.
So again, I think from my perspective, we can look at that and, and I'm more than willing to give you the authorization to do that through the county. But again, you need to find the money in your existing budget today to cover that. Okay? What do you guys, where you at?
For clarification entirely, I, I'm looking at the amendment motion. Was that stated with that?
You can do that. So, the motion on the table is to move authorization for the four individuals involved in the deposition for ILA, correct? Alright, so I make a motion that we amend that from a budget perspective so that the sheriff's office will be responsible for the budget in this situation. And it's come out of his budget instead of appropriated through any other means throughout the county.
Give her a second.
Awesome.
Okay, let, let the discussion purposes. We're coming up upon amendment of budgets.
Correct.
If the sheriff then needs to amend his budget.
Really good question, but I would say no in this specific example.
I'm just, I'm just, we're talking about protecting the county on everything.
I think we're already passed them in the time.
It is, but I did, I did not, I've not seen news of amendment one.
No, I have not yet.
So, we have a, a motion on the floor and sec, was there a second thing to be amended?
Yes, a second.
For the amendment, all votes in favor say aye.
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 Posed?
Aye.
Uh, then we have the motion for the, uh, league hiring outside counsel for the sheriff. All views in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Aye. You can report then, Rich.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda. The last time we ever had sheriff talk to a conflict sheriff was there.
Well, maybe not.
We were here, Katie, to prove together how we were.
So, the last thing we need to do is approve the ads contract for fiscal year twenty-six. And the contract, I modified the contract significantly because prior, the contract had to be based on your, uh, Iowa Public Health Board of Supervisors Prevention Grant that we would give, that would reimburse the county for twenty-five percent of the funds that you spent on prevention services through a contractor. So, I pulled all that language out, brought it back to the board's simple set that it was before Iowa Department of Public Health dictated how we contracted with our provider. Um, Steve has gone through that, Katie's gone through that and Dan Kennel, ads director, has gone through that. So, this is at a stage where it is ready to be signed and executed. And Dan did go ahead and sign and stand back in his signature page for me, so he has given his final approval of that contract. There's a little bit of a difference. I think that we budgeted twenty-two thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars. Dan's budget was like twenty thousand. Yeah, so I used his figures. It's his budget, so that's what we went with, so there will be a little bit of money left in that budget.
So, we have discussion, motion to approve this contract. Also move it. Is there a second? We have a second?
Yes, alright, I'm free to.
Discussion.
I have a question about where, and I've talked to Robin, where does that fit into like line items on the budget? How does that work? Cause my budget's already been published for public health, so how, I'm just the administrative side. I don't understand that.
And we're talking about the, what we talked about upstairs was the, how does that fit in the budget?
It was its own budget.
It was a little wide.
Are we talking this twenty thousand dollars? Is that what we're talking about or what's happening?
So, is it a separate budget then? It's completely on its own?
So, is that the reason why we have the, the budget? We're gonna read that number down, right? For the sixty, from the sixty.
Or, or, yeah.
I'll take on a third, that's fine.
It's easy.
You're more aware of this than I am, so any, any more detail on that? Just where that money goes, or where, on the case.
We've been doing this for well over twenty-four years.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's a lot more.
Yeah, well over twenty-four years. It was in play before I did it. Um, Iowa Department of Public Health has in that entire time reimbursed the twenty-five percent as long as we submitted the grant. And then that obviously changed because, um, addiction-related services are now under the Behavioral Health Area Service, excuse me, Administrative Service Organization. So, um, you in budgeting decided that you continue to support that prevention cause I do think that it's, it's good work. It's definitely one of the focuses that the state is going to, um, when it comes to addiction and mental health.
Is there any form of measurement that we can see what good that has done in the past?
I mean, there's always a couple of reports every year, um, and so when it was with the Department of Public Health, they had to meet criteria and they've always met criteria. And now I've always looked at those reports and monitored it. Now, what it's gonna be is it's gonna be between Katie and the supervisor for the prevention grant to identify how Katie wants that and a report, or she might want a quarterly report, or she might wanna, to a biannual, twice a year report, but, um, ads prevention supervisor has resigned. So, they'll be in the process of hiring a new one. So, Katie will just need to identify how she wants them to report to her what work they're doing and what the outcome is of that work.
And then I would assume, Katie, they, the opioid funding, can that be utilized for any of the expenses and things?
Our percentage, our percentage share is off, sure.
I don't know. I mean, this is.
We'd have to have Steve look over that one.
The opioid funding is fairly specific too because for the prevention dollars, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, but those can be used for prevention of any type of substance. The opioid funding is specific for opioids.
The opioid funding is specific for opioids, am I, am I wrong there?
I'm not wrong. But if we could identify that as a useful opioid, would you try that?
Yeah, I, I mean, what's the most used substance in the county? I mean, is it, is it opioids or is it alcohol or is it...
I would have to check on that and get back to you.
All of the above, right, Rich?
All the above, yeah. Opi- opioids is probably a minor problem, frankly. It's not an invisible problem by all means, but it's probably a minor one. Meth, marijuana, alcohol, they're all, they're all in there.
I hate to say, but I would say if you didn't find it, you, what our measurement would be is how much more involvement Rich would have all of a sudden.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing that I would note is the focus for the last several years has been in juvenile diversion. So they go in, the, um, schools will have youth that are, that substance, the schools will contact the HECs to do a juvenile diversion program for those kids and that is an evidence-based curriculum. The other thing that they focused on is, um, workplace substance use and, and impacting the workplace and helping the workplace, um, write up policies around, um, addiction and work. And then the other thing that they do is they use it for, um, like, fairs, just, you know, promoting prevention in, um, public venues.
You know, the education arm of that, you know, with opioid that, you know, in conjunction with all the other things that I would, I'd like to think maybe there'd be some educational expense that could be taken out or...
Out of the ads funding?
No, out of the, uh, opioid.
Yeah, that, that was discussed in our meeting that we just had one, uh, of them at the end of May.
Any other questions? All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you very much. I will not be back in an employee's capacity after this.
We have this memorandum of understanding to...
For?
For the memo.
Oh, the advocate?
Advocate.
Okay.
Alright. So that is, next on our agenda. So we have a memorandum of understanding between eight count, uh, as, um, this is agreement with, uh, DeMoyne County, Havre County, Jefferson County, Green County, DeWalter County, Adrian County, and Washington County with sheriff, the use of a mental health patient advocate, you've had this in place. Sharon, how many years do you wanna say this, this?
Well, that's, again, before my twenty-year period, so probably thirty, thirty-five years. Um, for a very long time, it was covered under some other funds and then it got kicked to the county and it was there for several years and you were actually employer record for the advocate. And then we had a, a loss in advocate and Henry County decided they didn't want to do that, so DeMoyne County picked it up. It is mandated, um, even though the judicial system doesn't want to pay for it, it's mandated. And then, um, here a few years ago, it did fall under the umbrella of HHS and so HHS was monitoring, um, like, quarterly reports and things like that for the advocates to get statistics on the work that they're doing.
So far as the funding stream from now on, the state still be picking it up then?
It's my understanding that the state will pay for that. Um, I do not know what the mechanism is for that, but it's my understanding that that's part of the package of, um, services, I'll call it, that they are supposed to reimburse for.
Yeah, reimbursement, that's what we were talking about.
That was my understanding that I received also from, uh, Josh and Kelly, Jack yesterday. He said that, one of his discussions that they would be picking it up, so, mm-hmm, no cost for the county.
It's just on DeMoyne County's shoulders to pay it and then seek reimbursement, so...
And seek reimbursement. So with that, is there a motion to approve this memorandum of other county's sharing with the eight other counties? And I, right now I know that Uli County is already signed off on it.
I think alright.
There's quite a few that are saying...
Oh, yeah, I have.
Yeah, and that was, uh, because, uh, I printed that out last week and that's...
I know that Washington County, you guys are looking at yourself.
DeMoyne did it on Tuesday.
You have a motion?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Karen, now, all votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's after Robin, one place. Thank you.